Welcome everyone to the April 16th, 2013 Shakopee City Council Meeting. I call the meeting order. Ms. Weckman, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Sherman?
Here.
Counselor Lehman?
Here.
Counselor Clay?
Here.
Counselor Whiting?
Here.
Mayor Tabke?
Here. I'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now if we could please just take a moment of silence in honor of the folks in Boston who were injured and killed in the Marathon bombings. A very, very tragic incident. Thank you. We will now move on to item number three, approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Mrs. McNeil?
Mr. Mayor, we have one which is on the table and was provided to you this afternoon, but it's a resolution of support for Shakopee being considered for a state amateur baseball tournament in the future.
All right.
Eleven E three.
Okay. Counselor Clay?
Move to approve the agenda with the addition of eleven E three.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Whiting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, now we get to move on to what I understand is a yearly item, is item number four, is the Arbor Day proclamation in order for the city of Shakopee to be recognized as a tree city USA. We need to read the Arbor Day proclamation and that is as action proclaiming April 26, 2013 as Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. Whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed in the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, we're about half done, just so everybody knows. Whereas trees are a renewable resource given, giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Brad Tabke, Mayor of the city of Shakopee, Minnesota, do hereby declare Friday, April 26, 2013 as Arbor Day in the city of Shakopee and urge citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to promote, to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Given under my hand and the seal of the city of Shakopee, the 16th day of April 2013. That's always fun, I gotta tell ya.
Gladdens our hearts.
It gladdens my heart, absolutely. All right, now we move on to item number five, consent business. Is there anything to change from consent? Mr. McNeil?
No, unless there's a desire to add eleven E three, the resolution which is on the table tonight, there's no discussion that we anticipate of staff.
Okay. Counsel? Counsel Lehman?
Can we add eleven E three, which is the state amateur baseball tournament? Ordinance resolution to support.
All right.
There's no objections?
Yeah. Any other?
Eleven three.
Changes to the consent agenda? All right, I'll entertain a motion for consent as amended. Counsel Lehman?
Move the consent agenda as amended.
Counsel Whiting?
Second.
Mr. McNeil, would you please read the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Five A one adopts, excuse me, grants an extension for final pad of South Parkview Fifth Edition to April 19, 2015. Item five A two adopts Resolution 7295 approving a request to amend the comprehensive plan to guide property in its raceway park for industrial use. Five B one declares bicycles and other miscellaneous property held by the police department to be surplus property, authorizes proper sale or disposal. Five C one, authorizes appropriate city officials to sign a recycling program agreement with Scott County for the April 27, 2013 City Cleanup Day event. Five D one accepts with regret the resignation of Nathan Hook, Community Service Officer in the Police Department, effective April 18, 2013. Five E one, authorizes appropriate city officials to execute the following agreements. First, with the Shakopee Coyotes Baseball Team to operate baseball stadium concession stand for all home Coyote games. Number two would be with the Shakopee Indians Baseball Team to operate the baseball stadium concession stand for all home Indian and Shakopee High School games. And finally, three, with the Shakopee Soccer Association to operate the 17th Avenue Sports Complex concession stand. Five E two, authorizes the appropriate city officials to enter into a contract to participate with the Metropolitan Council 2013 Citizen Assistance Water Quality Monitoring Program. Five E three, authorizes appropriate city staff to enter into a contract with Schoenfelder Painting for the extra maintenance and painting of the community center facility in the amount of $30,567. Five F one approves payment of bills and electronic transfer in the amount of $1,054,758.23. Five F two approves the recommendation of the Telecommunications Advisory Commission to contract with Agenda Quick Software for live web streaming and video on-demand service at a cost not to exceed $2,250 per year with a one-time startup cost of $6,325. Five F three approves the application, grants a temporary on-sale liquor license to Scott County Historic Society, 235 Fuller Street South for an event on May 23, 2013. Five F four approves the application and grants a massage therapy business license to Pure and Simple Therapeutic Massage LLC, 1221 East Fourth Avenue, number 195, and approves an application and grants a massage therapist license to Jennifer McIntune. Five F five approves the application and grants a tobacco license to DG Retail LLC doing business as Dollar General, 1202 Shakopee Town Square. And eleven F, excuse me, eleven E three was added to consent agenda, and that adopts Resolution Number 7296, a resolution to support for Shakopee as host site for future state amateur baseball tournament.
Thank you, Mr. McNeil. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we move on to item number six, recognition of involved citizens by city council. Anyone have an item you'd like to talk about that is not on the agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item number nine, recess for Economic Development Authority meeting. Do we have a motion to recess? Counsel Lehman?
Motion to recess for economic development meeting.
Do we have a second? Second by Counsel Clay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. President Whiting, you're on.
Good evening. It's called to order the Shakopee Economic Development Authority, April 16, 2013 meeting. Ms. Weckman, can you please make note of the roll?
Yes, Mr. President.
I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Ms. Sherman?
I move to approve the agenda.
Seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number three, PDA minutes. I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes for March 19. Mr. Lehman?
Can we do both? Make a motion to approve the minutes of March 19 and the bills in the amount of $3,437.13?
Is there a second? Mr. Tabke. Motion and second to approve the minutes and the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, no other business tonight. I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Ms. Sherman?
Make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, May 21, 2013 at 7:00 PM.
Is there a second?
It was just getting fun, but I'll second.
All right, sorry, I was rolling. Yeah. Motion and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you, President Whiting. We reconvene the Shakopee City Council meeting, and we move on to item eleven A one, alcohol license violation hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Before you this evening is the action that was previously set by council earlier this spring to establish April 16 as the hearing for alleged violation of five liquor licensees who have sold alcohol to minors during compliance checks that were conducted by the Shakopee Police Department on August 24, 2012, and October 6, 2012. This is based on a 2002 council adopted penalty. Attached in your agenda packet is the city code that defines the penalties that were approved by previous councils. There are five entities who have been brought forward on the alleged violations. Tonight before you is also a request from Mr. Dewar as the Wine Cellars 4041 Dean Lakes Boulevard with a request to speak to the council. Tonight before you, you are requested to acknowledge the receipt of the waiver and admissions of violations from the five organizations. And at this point, if council has any questions, Chief Tate is here with you tonight, and will answer any questions.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions on this item? Counsel Lehman?
Of the five, is it safe to assume that form have admitted?
Could you explain that process? Chief Tate?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the businesses that you have before you have all had gone through the proper court proceedings, and they have pled guilty.
Thank you. Mr. Dewar, would you like to speak? Please do. Come on up and sign in the whole fun part.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmen. I'm not here to dispute that the incident occurred or to dispute the punishment. Simply wanted a minute of your time, first of all, to apologize that it did occur and explain the situation if I could. I happened, I was in my store when it happened. One of my, I stepped into the office for just a moment when the incident occurred. As I came out and walked up to our front desk, the undercover officer was informing my employee that he had just served a minor. I write then and there, ask the employee what happened. He said, "I checked your ID. It was 1291." This occurred in August of 2012, which means 1291, the employee would have been 20. 91 was the year that, you know, would, a customer would turn 21, so that is the year that they're used to looking for. However, he made a mistake and did not accurately check the month. He did check the month, but he didn't do the math correctly in his head. So I just, it was a mistake. It was not malicious. It was not with intent. And what I've done to stop this mistake in the future is I then went on, went online and I purchased an identification swiper. It's a magnetic swiper. So now, every transaction, we now swipe the person's identification. Their age immediately pops up. We then will check the driver's license, you know, the picture, age, or the picture weight and height to make sure it is actually them. But what it does is it takes out the chance or the opportunity for mathematical error. So I just wanted to apologize that an incident did occur and let you know that it is very serious to me, and I have, this is what I've done to try to stop so that doesn't happen again in the future. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. So now, Chief, with that, what do we do with regards to the waiver?
Mr. Mayor, maybe I can help with that?
Yes, Jim.
Since the applicant didn't sign the waiver but admits the violation, I think the appropriate thing would be just to adopt a motion imposing the fine, excuse me, imposing the penalty established by the city code for a first-time violation. And that penalty is a $1,000 fine and a one-day suspension. However, $500 of the fine and the one-day suspension are suspended for one year on the condition that they have no further incidents. So I think the motion would just be impose the penalty for a first-time violation set forth in the city code.
Okay. Counsel Lehman?
Well, first I'd like to commend the applicant for making the improvements that are gonna make sure that this doesn't happen in the future. Makes it a lot easier for your employees to just swipe the card and find out if it's legitimate sale or not. So I applaud you for that effort. With that being said, I'd make a motion to impose the city code penalty, $1,000 fine, one-day license suspension for the first incident, suspending $500 and the one-day suspension for one year, consistent with city code.
Ms. Thompson, that's good. All right, do we have a second?
I have a question.
Let's have a second first.
All right, I'll second it.
Second by Counsel Clay. Discussion? Counsel Clay?
If the, Mr. Dewar has not signed the waiver of admission, maybe I need to know better what is it and why do we ask people to sign it?
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when the council adopted this code provision, we wanted to give the licensees the option not to have to appear and come before the city council. So the council adopted mandatory penalties. Didn't give yourself any discretion. These were to be, it gave the licensees the option to submit a waiver in writing before the meeting so they didn't need to appear. This particular licensee didn't sign a waiver, so that's-
But did appear.
But did appear, which he has a right to do, so that, so that's why, the reason for the motion.
Counsel Whiting?
Mr. Dewar, if you're willing, or if you remember, what is the cost of the swiping machine you talked about?
And if you could, Mr. Dewar, if you could come up to the microphone up by Julie, please?
It was $395, $29 shipping for a total of $424.
So it'd be a good value as long as things don't happen again. So for other establishments out there, that'd be a good thing to have. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item number 11B two, rezoning request for RAR Malting to rezone property from Highway Business B one to Heavy Industrial I two, ordinance number 868. Mr. Leek?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is, as you noted, a request to rezone property from Highway Business B one to Heavy Industrial I two. The properties total, okay. There we go. The properties are located both on the north side of First Avenue and the south side of First Avenue. In total, they're about six acres. As you'll have seen from the report, the properties on the north are guided in the current comprehensive plan for mixed use. And for those of you who are not part of the council when that comp plan was adopted, the mixed-use designation in this corridor was intended to allow a great deal of flexibility for private property owners who might choose to use their properties for residential, commercial, or industrial purposes. So staff has found that the proposed rezoning is consistent with that use. Also, on the south side, the guiding is for industrial. And so we have found that the rezoning request is consistent. All of the properties are, of course, owned by RAR Malting.
Michael, could you move the, up a little bit? Thank you, sir.
Not a problem. Recalling from the Planning Commission public hearing on April 4, their general intention for the properties on the north side, only a portion of which are really usable because of the grades on this property and potentially the floodplain location here, is to establish a potential bagging and warehouse location for their Brewers Supply Group. And the properties on the south side of 69 First Avenue are part of their larger industrial property at present. You'll have seen from the report at the Planning Commission, we did have comment from some of the neighbors, and I believe some of them are here tonight. They did express some concerns about potential truck traffic and the type of structures that would be allowed by the rezoning. However, at the close of the public hearing, the Planning Commission did recommend the rezoning to you. They did so in a vote of three to one to one. One of the members recused themselves, and one of the members voted against the motion. So with that, if you have specific questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we'll hear from the applicant or those who are here for this item.
Thank you. Counsel Lehman?
Mr. Leek, for reference, can you, like, show us where the trail that runs along Levy Drive would be on here? And then where the old CH Carpenter lumber might be?
I'm not sure. I think the CH Carpenter lumber site is on-
First and Apgar?
Yeah, Apgar. Apgar is here.
Could you pull it up again?
This is First Avenue. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
First Avenue is here. Apgar is here. So we're talking about this area generally. You may recall the site on the north side of First Avenue was a while ago Patriot Auto Sales. So that's that property that we're talking about.
Trail?
The trail, I'm not sure of the specific alignment through this area. I'm sorry.
I can help you with that if you like. The trail goes down into the woods right at the corner of the property off Scott Street.
Right.
So the Scott Street actually wraps around there to, towards the gazebo.
Takes a right, that's Levy Drive.
Right. So the trail, it actually goes down right at that first lot, and then kind of sweeps back a little bit into the, into the woods.
Yeah, and it goes like this here, and then comes down and around and up this way. The reason I bring that is because there's not much room right there. And I'm curious to what their intent is with that lot, because there, doesn't seem like there's a whole lot you can actually do with it. So I'll ask them that.
Yeah, and the applicant did have a graphic that showed that portion of the property which they expect will be usable based on the grades, and it does not include that area to the far northeast on those lots.
Counsel Clay?
Far as desired use is warehousing?
Yes, they have a division called the Brewer Supply Group. And what they, they currently have a facility outside the metropolitan area. What they would do is construct a building. They would bring the material in, bag it, and then ship it out from that to the customers of that Brewer Supply Group. And as I understand it, that serves more of the custom brewing market than the traditional beer brewing market, so.
To do that, do they need heavy industrial zoning? Wouldn't light industrial or wouldn't even the highway business accomplish that?
Business would not accomplish that at all. And warehousing is generally allowed in both the I one and I two. Again, their existing properties are I two, so the thought was that the I two classification is consistent with the nearby and surrounding zoning classification that RAR has.
Any other questions? All right, first, would the applicant like to speak? Anyone here tonight? All right, anyone- All right, anyone else like to speak on the item?
I'm Mrs. Howard Crone, and we live at one twenty-five North Pierce, and we lived there fifty-nine years. And I'm, that whole block is, they wanna do this heavy industrial, and we're the only lot on the end of it. And I'm worried, the front of our house is about twelve feet from the road, Brook Lane it's called, and I'm afraid that this heavy traffic is gonna go through there. And I don't like that right in front of my nose. So, that's all I got to say.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Crone, I appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak on the item this evening? All right, any other further questions or discussion from council? Councilwoman Whiting?
Yeah, we, Councilman Lehman talked about the properties on the east side, and I do have a concern with those. I understand the south side of First Avenue as being industrial, where the old CH Carpenter lumber is. I think this would be a bad land use in my mind.
page, which shows the permitted uses, up on the overhead so that you can see them.
I think that being that close to the river, that close to some of these houses down there,
You can see that in the I one, warehousing is one of those uses which is permitted of
I just, in my mind, can envision that as industrial.
right.
The mixed-use classification is pretty broad.
In other words, if they are not seeking exterior storage or something else extraordinary,
I just can't see heavy industrial in that area.
they would come in for a building permit.
All right.
Also allowed are establishments supplying goods or services to other industrial uses,
Councilman Clay?
Before RAR could construct this, it looks like there's a lot of individual lots of
utilities, offices associated with another permitted use, and office buildings.
record here. Would they need to replat this?
There are a number of conditional uses that include manufacturing, fabrication, processing, Members of the council, I'm not entirely certain if they would need to replat or could and so on. administratively combine the lots. If we then go to the I two zone, there are some additional permitted uses, motor freight We haven't taken a close look at it, at that, at this point. The lots would have to be combined for them to construct a structure on them for the intended purpose, though.
Councilman Lehman?
Can we get an overview of the difference between I one and I two?
terminals, although that is not specifically defined in the zoning code, so it requires some interpretation.
Mr. Leek, could you focus that, please?
Pardon?
Could you focus that a little for us? Thank you.
I can certainly try to. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Manufacturing, fabrication, and processing become a permitted rather than a conditional use. Warehousing and wholesaling, as in the I one zone, is a permitted use in the I two, and a number of the other uses are very similar. The one thing that is somewhat unique in the I two zone is the allowance of adult establishments per ordinance amendments that were made several years ago, although there are other restrictions related to distance of adult establishments from residences and so on in another portion of the city code.
Councilman Lehman?
Mayor, I actually agree with Councilor Whiting on the south side of First Avenue with the adjoining property to be used consistent with what RAR is currently using their property for. I guess I do have a little bit of a concern on the north side for heavy industrial. I'm not sure if that, my concern is so much for light industrial, but I guess it would be nice to have the applicant here to explain what their plans are, to get a better idea of what they're anticipating, but-
And, members of the council, you probably noted in the report that our review deadline, I believe, is in June for this one, and so I would suggest if you would like to make sure that we have the applicant here, that you table this and we would bring it back to the next meeting. The review deadline is June thirteenth.
I would suggest we do that, because I know that they have, on the north side of one-on-one, I know that there are, their plans do not by any means include that entire area. I know they're just gonna use part of it and the rest of it will not be utilized for warehousing, so I'd like to know from them exactly what they plan on that. Councilwoman Lehman?
Well, I'll look at it backward, Mayor. If, once you zone it heavy industrial, you're pretty much legally committed to allow heavy industrial uses, regardless of what they are, as long as they fit into chapter, so I'd be kind of leery to do that, because you don't know what the end result is gonna be, and you're kind of constrained in what you can dictate at that point. So, you really have to watch how the impacts are gonna be to the surrounding properties.
And the river.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of controls on that, but yeah, too, or the trail or whatever else, you know? So, I guess I would, I'd be cautious about heavy industrial there.
Councilman Clay?
I agree. I'm like, as far as the north side of First Avenue, just don't know how I could feel very comfortable with heavy industrial there.
Okay. Do we want to table in here from the applicant?
Sure.
Do we need a motion to table?
Yes.
Move the table to our next meeting?
May seventh.
May seventh, two thousand thirteen.
Councilman Sherman?
I'll second.
Um, don't need any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, we are tabling that item until the May seventh meeting.
Mayor and members of the council, if I can, for those who showed up for this item, what that means is we will put this back on the agenda for May seventh. We will try to make sure that the RAR representative is here as well, as they were at the Planning Commission meeting. We won't be sending out new notices of that meeting, however.
When?
May seventh.
Seven.
And if you have any questions, contact Julie Kleema or myself here at City Hall.
Thank you for being here. All right, now we're gonna move on to item number eleven C one, approval of Moore's Avenue and Valley View Road intersection design. Mr. Looney?
Okay, thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. I did include a lot of information on this item, as this item does go back to two thousand, and so it's been around for a while. And in order to summarize the amount of material, I'll go through a little PowerPoint and go through the highlights. For background, in two thousand, we did commission a traffic study to look at, and this was the thickness of the traffic study, but I think Mr. Lehman was maybe on the council then, I'm not sure. Maybe not, I think he was. But anyway, we looked at several alternatives to do a new design, a renewal layout of Valley View Road, because the existing gravel road could not be, would be disconnected someday when County Road Seventeen was upgraded. It's on too steep of a hill, so it had to be redesigned. We entered into a memo understanding with Scott County on April seventh, two thousand and one, after a series of meetings with property owners and developers in the area, and we preferred alternative was this figure right here, which we then laid out phase one of, which was the current Valley View Road and Saracen Street, and then phase two would be an east-west connection over from Seventeenth Avenue over to Saracen Street. This connection would line up with Moore's Avenue, and that's what we ended up with after that study. Later on, in two thousand and eight, we, the county initiated a County Road Seventeen corridor study. This was being done in two thousand and eight and complete in two thousand and nine. Moore's Avenue traffic study was authorized by council after an open house on the County Road Seventeen corridor study, which many of the residents who were not living there at the time were very upset or concerned about the amount of traffic that might be coming their way with this new connection. So we did initial traffic study, which was completed on June twenty-third, two thousand and eight. We did have a neighborhood meeting on July thirty-first, in which thirty-two people did attend that traffic study meeting. Looking at the main items of the traffic study, the main area, data collection area, if you look at Prairie Village and Pheasant Run and a little bit of Greenfield subdivision, they are surrounded by Collector Streets, Saracen Street, Seventeenth Avenue, Independence Drive, and Valley View Road. So everything, all the people that live in there, they come in and out of that subdivision to Collector Street. There really is not a lot of cut-through traffic where people want to cut through the subdivision to get to a Collector Street. It's people living there. And then our more detailed study area was to look at St. Francis Avenue, Moore's Avenue, and Alden Avenue as the main streets that would be impacted by a future Valley View Road connection. We went out and took traffic counts on the, all the outlets in various areas. These are the traffic counts, seventeen hundred and thirty-two cars on St. Francis Avenue, two forty-nine at Moore's Avenue, two ninety-eight at Alden. If you look at Pheasant Run Street, there was eight hundred here, eight eighty on French Straits, twenty-two hundred on Thrush. The whole idea of the concept of these subdivisions is to disperse the traffic out, in and out of this area, to Collector Streets. This is, then we did a little model to, what is the diversion? If we make the connection, there would be an additional five hundred and fifty-seven cars in Moore's Avenue, based on the model that was created. St. Francis Avenue would go down seven hundred and sixty-two, and Alden would go up one So after that meeting we had, many of the residents wanted to do something to limit the traffic on Moore's Avenue, so we did an update on the study and analyzed five alternatives. Later on, we took the recommendation of this study, and we presented it to council on October twenty-first, and council did approve a one-way alternative from Moore's Avenue, which would be a westbound, traffic could go westbound, but traffic could not come in from Moore's Avenue from Valley View Road. And again, these existing conditions, these are numbers, as you keep in mind as we go through the alternative, existing traffic on Moore's Avenue was two forty-nine, Alden's two ninety-eight, and seventeen thirty-two. When we make the original proposal, Moore's would go up to eight hundred, kind of hard to see, nine ninety for St. Francis, it would go down to, and Alden would go up to four eighty-three. Cul-de-sac alternative basically doesn't make any traffic on Moore's, and the others go up. Alternative two, which is the one-way, which was selected, Moore's goes down to four oh three, St. Francis goes down from the initial seventeen hundred to thirteen hundred, and Alden goes up to five thirty-four. The other alternatives were some variation that would not, would require some change in the alignment that we had for Valley View Road. And those would stay about six hundred for Moore's, six hundred for Alden, for both these alternatives. When we do diversions or offset, they really didn't seem to do much in the area of traffic. The one big difference would be the one-way, which would restrict traffic on Moore's to four hundred versus the eight hundred. This is just the minutes of the council meeting on October twenty-first. I would note that Mr. Lehman also asked if Hazen Street would be part of that alternative. We said we would look into that, we think it would, would come into play, and I'll explain that as we get through this. So with the background, now we're in two thousand and thirteen. Valley View Road and Seventeen is currently being designed. Plans will be coming forward soon, and construction will be happening starting this summer. We ordered that project on April seventeenth, two thousand and twelve, and now we've looked at three alternatives for Moore's Avenue at this current time. This is the alignment plan sheet that we're looking at for Valley View Road here. Marshall Road is north and south. This is Evergreen Lane on the west, Saracen Street on the east. We then came up with three alternatives, they're listed on the side here, and one and two are very similar, which we would actually reduce the width of the intersection of Moore's Avenue by redoing curb and gutter, kind of constricting the, basically constricting the throat of the, of the driveline. To at least, we, I don't think we can go any narrower than twenty-two feet. We certainly need room for a snowplow, and we also need room for a fire truck. And the other alternative, too, is to make it a little more, maybe more maintenance-friendly, but we'd have to move a catch basin and redo some more curb and gutter work and pavement work in order to make that work. And then alternative three is just put in the signs and striping to say, "Do not enter from Valley View Road." All three of these alternatives would have stop signs on Valley View Road and Moore's. We'd also have striping in the drive lanes and signs on Valley View Road saying that you have to turn right or left, that you can't go straight. If you think about it, the only difference today versus whenever this was built is Valley View Road traffic coming in. All the other traffic would stay the same as it is today. Alternative one and two have costs of twenty thousand to thirty thousand, respectively, from our consultant. Alternative number three, which is basically striping and signage, can be done for fifteen hundred. At this time, we're recommending alternative number three as being the most cost-effective, but if you want to create the true one-way reconstruction of Moore's Avenue, this is what you'd have to do. You would have to reconstruct this segment of Moore's Avenue from Saracen Street to Hazen, basically narrowing up the road. There are no driveways over here, so that's a good thing, and people on this street would be restricted to going out. They could not go this way. That could be a future project, in my estimation, as the street deteriorates, when we get into an overlay, we can certainly look at that in the future. And then the question would be, who pays for that? What would be the cost distribution in that project, unless council wants to pursue that now? So that's where our recommendation was to select alternative number three. Oh, I would point out that we did send out letters, fifty letters, to the property owners that were on the original list back in two thousand and eight, and we would recommend putting stop signs on the east and wet leg, east and west legs of Valley View Road and Moore's. We would also, after the connection is made, look at a four-way stop sign study for Valley View Road and Moore's. We think that would be appropriate. St. Francis Avenue and Saracen Street, which, when we did put a four-way stop at that intersection, and this was before we even did the studies, it was recommended by Councilor Bob Sweeney at the time and past that this would be a temporary stop, four-way stop, recognizing that the four-way stop may move down to Moore's and Valley View Road and Saracen Street. We think those studies could be done in the future after the road is complete. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Looney?
So, clearly, the option three that you're recommending is a lot less in cost. Do you believe that the striping and signage will be as effective as making a curb?
In my estimation, as the street deteriorates, when we get into an overlay, we can certainly look at that in the future. And then the question would be, who pays for that? What would be the cost distribution in that project, unless council wants to pursue that now? So that's where our recommendation was to select alternative number three. Oh, I would point out that we did send out letters, fifty letters, to the property owners that were on the original list back in two thousand and eight. And we would recommend putting stop signs on the east and wet leg, east and west legs of Valley View Road and Moore's. We would also, after the connection is made, look at a four-way stop sign study for Valley View Road and Moore's. We think that would be appropriate. Saint Francis Avenue and Saracen Street, which, when we did put a four-way stop at that intersection, and this was before we even did the studies, it was recommended by councilor Bob Sweeney at the time and past that this would be a temporary stop, four-way stop, recognizing that the four-way stop may move down to Moore's and Valley View Road and Saracen Street. We think those studies could be done in the future after the road's complete. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Looney? Council Sherman, he's waiting.
So clearly, the option three that you're recommending is a lot less in cost. Do you believe that the striping and signage will be as effective as making a curb change?
I, I do, for a couple of reasons. People that are in the neighborhood, the ones that want, want the, they want the, the one-way. And no matter what we do, even, even if we restrict that opening, there will be people that will, you know, there'll be a certain percentage of people that will go through that. We knew that when we had the, the earlier meetings, that preventing people from doing that still will be tough. We will have signs and striping, and again, the traffic coming in from Valley View Road would see that there's a do not, they have to stop. They have to say, "Do not enter," they have to turn right or left. I think they will, if, you know, I don't know if it'll be as effective, but I think it should be fairly effective.
Council Lehman?
Park a squad there, and the ticket money can redo the road one way.
Council Lehman?
I didn't say that.
I'm gonna go back into the history a little bit, Mr. Looney. If you could put up just an overview map of, of Valley View going all the way through, the concept.
The first one?
Yep. Years ago, when this first came about, the thought process at the time, and it may have changed, but I guess I still see it the same way, is that the main collector, where it now says Phase Two on here, connects to Valley View and, uh, Saint Francis, Saracen, Independence. But really, the traffic that's coming from the west going east, they're either gonna do one of two things. They're either trying to get into that subdivision because they have a reason to be there, whether they live there, or they're visiting a friend, or whatever. Or they're gonna bypass it and go over to eighty-three, or it, Independence, or something, some other collector street to get to where they're going, other than the neighborhood. The concern at the time was that that lines up directly with Moore's. And to prevent people from taking a shot through the residential and coming back out onto a collector and using a residential as a collector, instead of bypassing the residential and staying on a collector to get around it, was the reason why we kind of looked at Moore's at the time to restrict that, that flow in. Fair statement?
Yes, I, I mean, when you look at how the streets are designed in the subdivision, there's not a straight street in there. There's a lot of T-intersections, so the reality is, it's not a good cut-through. There is no cut-through. You're, you can travel much faster by getting on the collector street system if that's where you want to go.
Well, it's just, it's not designed to have a high volume going through the middle of these neighborhoods, so.
It's, we, from our study, it's pretty much a captive area. Traffic that is generated there comes back there. You might have some pizza deliveries, you know, school buses, but generally speaking, you don't have a lot of cut-through traffic. People are not gonna cut through there to get to another location, if that's what they want to do.
And I think the, the problem is, is less going to the west, because the folks that were coming, coming from maybe eighty-three to get to Marshall Road or something, they've got the opportunity to take Valley View all the way up, right to Marshall Road, without even thinking about going through the subdivision. But the problem with the lineup like this and Moore's, that option is straight ahead is there. And to minimize that, you, you either need to block it off or make it a, a one lane and make it an enforcement issue, and if the enforcement issue doesn't work, then maybe the second shot at it is to make it a cul-de-sac on that street at some point, maybe. But, uh, so that's kind of the history of the time.
So with that being said, I don't understand why Valley View, as you're going from east to west, right in that Phase One section where it cuts north, why Bruce, is that not, why did that, was that designed to not just continue going over?
It's in the middle of the hill, Marshall Hill, comes out, and it's a really bad sightline.
Oh, it's the sightline?
Yep, sightline off, they're coming down the hill.
The hill, the greater the hill.
Comes down on that gravel, yeah.
This is the location the county determined we could be at with this new roadway.
Got it.
So then, with that in mind, we looked at how do we make this connection?
Okay. Other questions? Uh, another question I have is if we do this as striping now, you had mentioned the memo about, when the road is redone, about putting in curb and that kind of thing. Is that what you think is the best way to go once we get there?
Yeah, I think in, in a few years, a overlay would be needed. That would be the right time to look at, you know, and combine this with another project, that's how we get better bid prices. But, you know, moving the curb in. And in the meantime, in the next few years, we can certainly take some traffic counts too and see how things are working. I mean, that's, that would be another objective that we would look at. But this, if we want to make it true one-way, the objective would be to bring that curb line in, redo the street. And the right time might be when we're doing it, when we're doing some pavement work, instead of just doing it now.
Council waiting?
Maybe we can keep some data collection on violations in that area too.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's something we, you know, the neighbors will probably be watching that pretty close.
Sounds like an expensive violation.
What's that?
Sounds like an expensive violation going on a wrong way.
I don't know what that would be, the chief would know.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Looney? Any of the homeowners who are out there like to speak? Please state your name and address and sign in on the packet there.
Nice to meet you guys, I'm Gary Pancake, and I live at nineteen fifty-two Alden. And the biggest question we have, I don't know, among the folks on Alden Avenue, is on Mathias and Alden. We've had three-car accidents, I think, this past year. And we have a kids' bus stop at the main, um, the stop or the main four-way right there. And I think we've had probably seven accidents, maybe in the past five, six years. But yeah, there's constant speeding in that area, and there's a lot of kids on the streets. And I think we've called and asked if we could get like a yield sign or a stop sign is what we really want, at least two of them, east side and west side of Alden. But is there a reason why we, if this does go through, why we couldn't get a stop sign on our street there? We've had the, I mean, we've had the traffic counts and stuff, I understand that, but, I mean, we have a lot of kids and I just don't understand why we can't get a couple of stop signs, especially in January this past year. Like twenty minutes after kids boarded a bus, there's a bad accident and it flew on the lawn. I mean, that's, that's one of my main concerns.
Got it. You want to explain traffic review, either of you?
Yeah.
Thanks.
And if that's been looked at in the past?
Yeah, we have looked at that, and we can look at it again. There are times when traffic patterns change. We, we keep track of all our accidents, and we map them, so we take a look at that intersection. I know we have looked at it before, and it didn't meet our criteria, but it's something that we could certainly look at this summer. And, uh, you know, revisit that again to see what's going on. So, and, and maybe even with this change in traffic patterns, that might put more traffic on Alden, it might, it might, might even raise it up a little bit. I think that's what, I think that's what I hear the residents say on that area.
Okay.
That's something we can certainly revisit.
Could you put the map back up there for me, Bruce, so I can see, sorry, where that's?
It's right here. It's got a direct access off of Valley View.
At the time of this map, it's just down in here.
Okay.
I have to get another map, but it connects up to Mathias, and there's a.
It's got direct access to Valley View too.
Yeah. So there's a, we've looked at that intersection. There is not a lot of, I mean, there's enough traffic, but it's kind of a fairly wide open, but there have been some accidents, I don't know how many right now. But we certainly have them mapped, and we certainly can take a look at that. That's the initial thing we would do anyway with any intersection. We look at the accident history, and that gives us a good indication of a, there's a problem.
All right, perfect. So yeah, if we'll do that this summer, that would be good. Council Lehman?
Mayor, I think it'd be a, a good idea to do that after, um, Valley View is connected and Moore's is restricted to a one-way. Because then you're gonna see what the change of traffic pattern is. And since Mathias has direct access off Valley View, down south, either having the option to be able to go past and out if it's people that should be bypassing going through, or if it's just internal traffic, and if it's probably internal traffic, to be honest with you, but Mathias has got a pretty long run from Pheasant Run all the way down to Valley View.
This is the intersection to talk about right here.
I guess I was assuming that it wouldn't happen until after the project was completed, that's.
Yeah, that's what I would do it.
Right, Bruce?
Yeah, we can do, we can do it now and do it after. I mean, we can certainly look at our, I mean, it's not that hard to put some tubes out there and get some traffic counts and look at our accidents and see where we're at. Gives us a good baseline.
Whatever you think is best. Any other questions? Any other, anybody else in the audience? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Carrie Murphy, and I live on Alden Avenue. I don't agree with the solution of a small section to turn into a one-way on Moore's Avenue, uh, which results in no entry from Saracen. First, the extra traffic will be reduced that will be running through Alden and Saint Francis. This does not give an even distribution between these two streets, these three streets. Moore's is turned into basically a part-time cul-de-sac while Francis and Alden take the brunt of the traffic. Second, the corner of Alden and Mathias experiences several accidents, as Gary brought up, or near misses. I know a lot of them aren't reported, um, but we can count on one at least every six months. Uh, we've tried repeatedly to get a stop sign to help manage the traffic, but it's been to no avail. The last accident was on January fifteenth of this year. It occurred twenty minutes after a bus stop pickup and twenty minutes before the next bus stop pickup. A mere twenty minutes time difference could have resulted in a big accident with a lot of small and junior high kids. And now with this addition on Moore's, we will add more traffic to our street in the morning and the afternoon hours, when, again, buses are running through the area. Third, I would like to know who is paying for the sign and the lane striping. I don't feel like my household should be responsible for this, as I'm already paying the price with the extra traffic. As far as decisions go, I think the Valley View Road extension is a poor decision overall, it simply isn't needed. I'm disappointed in, in the neighborhood that we didn't, um, ask, well, we helped try to solve the Moore's problem. It seemed that Saint Francis and Alden were overlooked and weren't given the same consideration. I'm a little bit disappointed in the city council, you should be looking for solutions that help the community. I feel that a lot of it was based off of how this road is going to be curved. And from the different things that you hear, and I, you know, obviously, it's not all completely true, but there's a curve in the road that I don't think is necessary, which allows it to line up with Moore's. If that road had just gone straight, it would come out, I believe, between Saint Francis and Moore's and possibly result in skipping this whole problem that Moore's has. Instead, as the council, I think you bent a bit to the hospital and to Beta Seed and the roads and the, um, the land that they have and how they were willing to negotiate that, instead of the residents who live in that community. I'm disappointed in my husband and myself, because in two thousand and eight, this was brought up, and while he did attend most of the meetings, he couldn't attend the last few because of business, and I worked at night at the time. We should have written more letters, and we should have made more phone calls. Lesson learned, and that's why I'm here tonight, because I don't want to be quiet on the issue anymore. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Looney, could you please address that with, uh, why it doesn't just tee, why it has to connect to Moore's anyway?
Well, hey, as I went through some of the alternatives, the offsetting didn't really do a lot of reduction. Didn't do a lot for anything. And the property owners, some Beta Seed, were paying a big chunk of money for this roadway. This is where they wanted to line up, you know, so balance the land-taking, which they're donating the land on both sides. And it also lined up with Moore's. Typically, that's what we would do, is line up the streets like we do. And, um, again, the offsetting did not really, you know, again, the people want to get into the subdivision, there would be more traffic on Moore's, probably some reduction on Alden with an offset, but it didn't amount to a lot.
All right, thank you. Council Lehman?
Mayor, I'd add that the county wouldn't let us run Valley View straight over to Marshall Road in its prior position, because it was in the bottom of the hill, and they said the sight line coming over the hill, eventually there'd be a light there, and when you come over the hill, you're not, you don't have enough slowdown time. That was the county's line, okay? Then if you walk down to Seventeenth Avenue and meet county spacing requirements, it's pushing you back toward the hill, so you basically find yourself in a midpoint between the hill and, and Seventeenth Avenue, which is where we're at, pretty much. So it's not just our decision, it's a county road, so we, we're kind of under the, the rules of the county on Marshall or Seventeen.
I mean, there is some value of this, there'll be a signal at this intersection. So there, there'll be a safer way for people to get in and out. That's what this will choose, there will also be a new entrance for the hospital with this project. The other, I mean, how this all formulated, in a sense, we had a lot of people at the meetings, and a sense was, a compromise was to increase traffic on Moore's, but not as much because of the direct hit. So that's where the one-way alternative was kind of selected and presented to council back in two thousand and one, two thousand and eight.
All right, any other questions? Anyone else in the audience?
Well, council, I'm John Heckle from Moore's Avenue. And, uh, just had a, I guess, a couple of comments to make. The, first of all, I want to, I guess, support my neighbors in, um, on the request for the four-way stop, I know over the years, there, there've been more, many accidents in that location. As I said, there's bus stops right there on the corner. And there's a lot of people that are going at fairly high speed through those intersections. And so, um, anything we can do to, to help prevent some incidents there, I think would be greatly appreciated. The other comment on, as far as the alternatives, um, one, two, and three that Bruce had shown, the, well, I understand that alternative three is, um, much, much less cost. I do agree with some of the concerns that have ever been voiced about the effectiveness, or how effective it may be, and, and is there a better way to do that? And, and hopefully, alternative one with not having to move the catch basin and stuff would be maybe a, a good compromise there. One of the other things I wanted to just comment on is, is I'm not sure if, what the traffic studies, if, uh, traffic with the extension of Valley View all the way over to the other side of Marshall is really taking an effect, or in, into account in those traffic studies, and with the high school being there, I believe there's probably gonna be a lot more traffic going east and west through that. And so, uh, would, would, Moore's could likely be a, um, see additional traffic from a larger area of the development, using that as the main way to get across versus Seventeenth. So, again, just, um, just wanna, I guess, in support of, of one of the other alternatives that was already shown, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Kurt Schimke, I'm a resident of Alden Avenue. And I just wanted to reiterate a couple of points that were made earlier. The first was just to have another proponent for the stop signs on Alden Avenue. Understand there's procedures, there's, um, ways to determine the need for a stop sign, but in my opinion, it's a pretty small investment, um, great reward to install those. Also, against the Valley View Road extension, uh, concept, but it sounds like that's something we're kind of locked into. So with that understanding, um, I'd like to, um, say that, uh, alternative number three, I think, is the right choice, in my opinion, at this time, if the Valley View Road extension is going to occur. I think it's a good intermediate step. I'd also like to request that, uh, traffic counts be performed after alternative three is implemented, if it is. Reason being? Um, reason being, if the, uh, traffic counts stemming from the study aren't quite as predictive, uh, quite as predicted. Alternative three leaves us some leeway to kind of redo the situation rather than jumping right into the cul-de-sac. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright, any questions from council? Councilman Clay?
Just a, a quick comment that. It seems. Counterintuitive, but there's some, been so many traffic studies done that show that adding stop signs. Doesn't make people slow down. They just have to stop more, so they speed up even faster between the stop signs to make up that time. You could create, be creating a more dangerous situation by adding a stop sign rather than. Leaving it unsignaled or, or take, even taking a stop sign out sometimes makes traffic slow down instead of speed up. Why? I don't know, but there's a lot of studies that show that to be the case.
Thank you. Councilman Lehman?
I tell you, there's a lot of people that run right through stop signs too.
Yeah. That's for sure.
Alright, any other questions? Alright, ready to entertain motion? Councilwoman Whitey?
Make a motion to approve alternat- alternative number three. Uh, for the intersection designed for Moore's Avenue, uh, and Valley View Road associated with the Valley View Road Project.
Have second?
Second with a friendly amendment.
Standing by, Councilman Lehman?
Also directing staff to do the traffic study in the area. Mathias and Alden.
I thought that was established, but.
After the, uh, project is completed with an emphasis on safety at that intersection.
Would you rather have that be a secondary thing or you want that to be part of it?
Then we're done with it and they can come back with the information.
Alright, Councilwoman Whitey, do you accept?
Uh, I can accept that. I thought it was gonna be done already. But I'd, I'd say before and after, but.
Alright, that's fine.
Alright.
And Mayor?
Ms. Loney?
I mean, that's fine if you, that's what you want to do, be that specific, or I would say direct. Direct that study of that intersection to the Traffic Safety Committee and. For further evaluation, but. I mean, we could, then we could look at it either this year and after traffic, because the road may not be built. Totally this year. It might not be till next year, but that's your choice. I just want to point out where we're at.
We're saying clearly after the project, before and after, I guess. So they, whenever they want to do it.
Alright, that. That doesn't exactly make a motion.
Right, they're gonna have to, they are gonna have to do it before, which would be pretty currently before the project is done and then. When a project is complete. So it's pretty open-ended, actually.
Could just refer to the Traffic Safety Committee.
Could, but then a Traffic Safety Committee might come up with a different idea and I, I would like to see them actually do a study. With the s- safety of that intersection in mind.
Okay.
I agree.
Are we clear? Is everyone on council clear as that second? Okay, um, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone, for being here and your comments today. I really appreciate you, uh. Coming and we'll definitely look at stop sign and safety of those areas, so thank you for being here. Um, item number eleven E one, text amendment to the Shakopee City Code, Section eleven dot sixty subdivision nine regarding tree management regulations ordinance number eight sixty-six. Ms. Polly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, I'm gonna just briefly go over a few items that have been changed since the last time this was before you. Um, won't go over the whole ordinance again, but. Um, on March nineteenth, the city council did look at the revisions to ordinance that were brought forward to from the EAC and the Planning Commission. Um, at that time, the council asked for this to be sent back to the EAC for further review on four particular items. Um, the right to farm laws, the impact on residents and the R one C or old Shakopee zoning area, the number of commercial industrial lots left to develop that were under two point five acres. Um, and number four, the increasing, the credit of the replacement tree. Credit for keeping heritage trees. So I'll go through each one of those items and then. Open it up for discussion if there's any further items that you'd like us to look into or any further questions you have. Um, and if not, then we can move forward with the, um, asking council to move forward with this resolution. Or we can do further, um, amendments to it. So. First of all, um, the, the number one item is the right to farm. Um, and Mr. Thompson has worked with us closely on this item as to whether or not it pertains to. This ordinance and it did include in your memo or attached to your memo, um, an email from Mr. Thompson as well as. A copy of the Minnesota Metropolitan Agricultural Preserves Program, um, and the right to farm law. And what, how it pertains to. As Mr. Thompson, uh, has informed city staff is that. The two laws that are in front of you don't pertain to this ordinance and don't need to be specifically called out in the ordinance because the. Um, Metropolitan Agricultural Preserves Program, uh, speaks to existing farmland and we do have an exemption in the current ordinance. Or an exemption that's added to our ordinance, um, that exempts existing commercial or industry, existing agricultural lands and farming operations. And then the right to farm law actually just, um, speaks to nuisances, um, and how agricultural property cannot be a nuisance, so. Neither one of them actually fall within this ordinance and for that, Mr. Tompkins, Mr. Tompkins can speak more specifically if you have questions. Um, the number two, the impact to the residents in the R one C or old Shakopee zoning area, um, this was a concern. The one item that we did, we actually added two items to, um. The. Ordinance since you've last seen it. Um, the first item is that. Well, first to make it clear about the impact on the residents is that, um, please remember that anytime a tree inventoried is required, it's only required of trees six inches or greater. So any tree under six inches is not inventoried and is not, um, does not fall in the replacement requirements. So a resident in the R one C zoning area, uh, per our natural resources corridor and our. Our three to one, two to one, and one to one replacement requirements fall within that three to one replacement requirement, so. Meaning they would have to re- remove three six inch or greater trees before they would be required to replace one tree. Um, so anything, they could remove five two-inch trees and they have no requirements. Um, if they remove one six inch or greater tree, they have no requirements, so it's only if they remove three or more. Um, and then they would have to replace just one, but we did put in because of the concern for the smaller lot sizes and whether or not, you know, someone's adding a deck or a garage to their. Current lot and it makes that lot even smaller and then there's utilities that run over the lot or easements and that sort of thing. Um, we did put under the exemptions that, um, on number three, when the boundaries of the, oops, sorry. When the boundaries of the project site on residential properties are too small, um, or planting is restricted by underground utilities, it is an exemption. From the tree, tree preservation or tree, tree replacement requirements for this ordinance, so. Um, and that would be determined as working with the homeowner as they're doing their permit, as we do currently and just saying that. Um, you know, you remove three six inch or greater trees, which would require you to replace one, but now you've gone this far out into your yard with your addition. Existing utilities or the, the size of the property would not fit that. They would not be then required to do anything further. The other thing that we added, um, that Ms. Ansula brought up at our last council meeting is the op- option for. People who don't want to replace one tree on their yard or whatever the replacement requirement is. Um, is that they could pay a fee that goes into a tree fund, which we currently have set up from developers who. Did not have the ability to replace all of the required trees on their development. Um, it's also made up of unauthorized tree removal funds that we have collected over the years and those. Funds are strictly used just to plant trees or to do tree management within the city, um, invasive species removal and that sort of thing. So this is something, um, number eleven, that's been added to the ordinance since you've last seen it on the nineteenth as well. It's something that we currently practice with our developers agreement for all developers. Why it was not in the ordinance, um, I looked back and. It was never in there, but it should be because it is an option that we give developers if they can't replace that correct number of trees on site. Um, they do have a cash amount that they can pay us per tree. Um, and then the city uses that to plant trees where needed in public spaces or replace trees that were removed in boulevards if. It sees fit to replace in the area, so. Um, that is the two items that we've added to try to address, um. The needs or the concerns of the residential area, not only the R one C area, but specifically that area, but. Um, other areas within the city too, that maybe a resident doesn't want to put a tree in their yard or can't fit one. We can. We don't call out the R one C specifically in the ordinance and I have checked back to, um, when the ordinance was revised in two thousand and. One, I believe, um, and in two thousand and. Eight, it was revised as well and I have all those dates. I have them in the memo as well. Um, and we have never specifically called out a specific area of the city. So I didn't find any record of that and maybe it had been in discussion, but it was never put into the ordinance. If that's something you want to add, we can add that, but we tried to, to. Do that for all the city if they have too small of a lot. I don't think it's just one area.
Councilman Lehman?
Um, it was March eighteenth, two thousand and three, and the ordinance number is six fifty-six. That ordinance specifically has this to. Development and, and parcels for development and it doesn't apply to existing residential.
Two thousand and three?
Yep. Ordinance six fifty-six, March eighteenth, two thousand and three. It talks specifically about. Requirements of preserving the trees and stuff for development, but it doesn't talk about residential. I guess the, I appreciate some of the changes.
Ordinance number six fifty-six I have right here.
Uh, was it six fifty-six?
Yep.
Oh, six fifty-six.
And?
I didn't see where it said residential in there.
Do you know exactly which section it was?
Uh, I thought I read the whole thing. But anyway, I guess my philosophical problem is that I have a problem paying the city because I want to take down my trees. And that the city is exempt from their own policies on the boulevard. So. In theory, the city could take all your boulevard trees down and what they find themselves, meaning they're gonna raise your taxes to pay themselves the fine. But if you want to take your trees down on your property that aren't on a boulevard and aren't on a easement. You have to pay somebody else. To take trees off your own property. I, I guess philosophically I have a problem with that. I, 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 I like some of your changes where if they're. Small trees, you know, you're not penalized, but. I just, I just can't imagine if somebody wants to put a thirty thousand dollar garage up and has to take a couple of trees down that they're gonna have to pay a, a fine to do this or pay. Four hundred dollars on top of a permit for a garage permit. Pay for their garage, have the increased market value, pay higher taxes for the increased market value and then turn around and pay four hundred dollars for each tree that they took down. It's like. They're their trees.
They don't have to pay four hundred dollars for each tree they take down.
Over a certain number.
They don't have to pay any money if they're able to replace the required replacement trees on their property. So if they've removed three trees, they would be required to put one back on their property. If they choose not to, then they can pay the amount, the four hundred dollars per tree, but they can replant a tree on their property.
Regardless, who's the city to, to tell me whether I have to have trees on my property or don't have to have trees on my property. It's my property. Pretty soon you'd be telling me what color my car has to be, you know. Where's it, where's the line stop? So that's the philosoph- philosophical difference that I have on it. I believe in property owner rights. But I also agree that if you have, uh, utilities or something, you shouldn't be planting above them. You shouldn't be. Taking trees down that aren't yours, city trees on a boulevard without city permission, so on and so forth. I, I agree and I get that part of it, but. If it's the private, private property, it's none of the city's business what, what I really do with it, as long as I'm not hurting my neighbors.
I did find in the, um, two thousand and three ordinance that it said. Under the definitions of development, it did say that additions into, uh, onto existing residential, I don't have that pie enough. Which was taken out in the revision, because I have the revision, um, the oh, this was revised in oh four, in January of oh four, and then again revised in oh eight. Um, but in the definition of development, it did say, uh, additions onto existing residential structures such as porches, decks. Indoor living spaces would not require within management plan. That was taken out when it was revised in oh four and in oh, or it was never put back in after it was taken out in oh four, so. So it doesn't call out a specific residential area, but it does call out that, yes.
Other thoughts? Um, I have a. Concern, I suppose, um, with the commercial industrial. Portion of it and Jamie and I talked about this. Quite a bit today and also a couple of weeks ago. Um. Is it, as we've been talking about this. It, uh. It's a philosophical issue similar to what Councilman Lehman is talking about, is that with commercial industrial. We have that with the intent that there's going to be buildings and jobs. And parking lots and those kinds of things on those properties and so. With those, it's very. It's not impossible, but it's very difficult to maintain and save. A significant number of trees on those properties. Um. And I have an issue with a couple of things with it specifically for the commercial industrial portion. And would like to think about exempting commercial industrial from it and changing instead of having. Penalties for taking trees down, which is a huge, um. Staff time issues, a lot of things like that. Um, but giving incentives for saving trees instead on commercial industrial properties. So, and giving credits to landscape ordinance and things like that, um, as it goes, which would be a fairly fundamental change to what we're talking about here. Um. But my issue with the commercial industrial portion of it is that we. Have guided that and zoned that to be buildings and parking lots and so why are we penalizing people and. Taking the, uh, putting the money in escrow and all those kinds of things for, um. Trees that are gonna be built in, that are gonna be planted within parking lots and things like that and that it doesn't. Make a whole lot of sense streamlined wise if we're working on bringing jobs and development and things like that to Shakopee. Um, having that as a. Fairly major penalty and hurdle to, to overcome, um. You're not gonna find much more of a tree hugger than myself on council, I don't think. Um, but it doesn't make sense to me to do that, so I would love. To relook at this. Portion specifically, um. I have a big problem still with what happened on multiple properties in the city where it was just clear cut. And with no regard whatsoever for the trees. I'd like there to be. It, um. Have some sort of mechanism that works up. That keeps people from cutting down all the trees until we have a final plat or have understanding as to what is gonna happen on that property and then we can work. With staff and the development, developer to. Create a print, plan that saves as many trees as possible if we can and if we're able to save trees, give credits on landscape requirements and things like that, so I. Um, just wanted to get people's feedback as to what you think about that and see if that's a direction we need to go and again, I dropped this. Today, so it's not fully vetted by any means. Councilman Lehman?
So if I'm understanding kind of what you're getting at, because I had that, part of that, that discussion with some developers too is. The. And I'm, I'm thinking like this, if you had an exemption clause with. An approved landscape plan, because you know basically they're gonna, they come in. To put all us, we're in the water and electricity and everything in the ground and footings and whatever they do. They pretty much cleared the whole thing, so they got a blank piece of dirt. They tear it all up, put all their stuff in the ground and then they start putting all the stuff, buildings and whatever, parking lots and. It's hard to look at what used to be there, what's currently going in there and what, what is the end result gonna be? Where when you have that landscape plan. Approval. You know that when they're done, there's gonna be a parking lot here, trees here, trees here, trees here, and they're putting all this back or what they're putting back. So I, I wouldn't be opposed to the exemption with some kind of an approved landscape plan.
Mm-hmm.
For that parcel, because then you know what you're getting in the end. And if, you know, and you can hold them to that. And you know, if they're putting in, you know, thirty trees and they took down, you know. Twenty or whatever, a pretty good deal then.
Mm-hmm.
The problem is gonna be when they're in an area that's got. high quality, you know, big, mature, good oak savannas or whatever.
But my thought with that is that, that shouldn't be zoned commercial industrial.
Right.
I mean, if we want it to be saved, then it should be set aside. The city should buy it. We should do something else. It shouldn't be commercial industrial.
Or you still, they still have the option, if it's zoned commercial industrial, to come forward on that property and say, here's my future landscape plan. And we can say, what you got now compared to what you're giving us ain't good enough. You know, let's rework this and try to save this and this and this or whatever. So there is an option there.
Counselor Whiting.
Both of your points kind of bring out the point that I brought up before with item number four, adding the value back to saving the trees, because it is so difficult in a development situation for commercial industrial property. They do have to, I mean, sometimes they have to take out the dirt and bring in new dirt and completely re-landscape that whole area. So I, I understand where you're going with this and, and I agree. You know, I think there has to be a way to work together and develop the property for commercial industrial with that manage, tree management plan or landscape plan. I think that's important, so we know what we're getting back and then add the value back by saving some of those heritage trees. That's why I tried to push that number up higher, give it the value.
Yep, I understand.
Mr. Mayor.
Jamie, yes.
Since we had talked earlier today, I did read our current landscaping ordinance even closer, which is subdivision eight of chapter eleven, so just before subdivision nine that we're currently looking at. And we do have an item F there, credits if they do save current landscaping units, which also, like I said, had mentioned last month in March when we went over this, is that the landscaping requirements and the tree replacement requirements go hand in hand. So if they have to replace, or if they have to plant fifty trees per their landscaping requirements and they have to replace sixty trees per the tree replacement, fifty of those are not duplicated. They account for both requirements, so they would just be required to do another ten trees. So in item F, it does say that, you know, anything left in good condition has one credit for, and they, because with the landscaping requirements, they can do bushes and trees fifty percent, have to be at least trees. But if it's a tree, a mature tree, which it doesn't, I don't know what the definition, I didn't have a chance to look at what they define mature tree as, they get a credit for three units. We've upped that in our current ordinance that's in front of you for the heritage trees, which we specifically call out as twenty-four inches or greater, and we're going to get four credits for that. So there is already a credit if they do keep it for that landscaping requirement, which does go hand in hand with our tree replacement requirements. And then we have for the heritage trees, which we specifically call out, we give the credit of four. Would be four units, I guess, would be requirement. So we could, you know, do something in addition to that as a credit or if that needs to be changed, we could have staff go look back and look at the landscaping credit. But I did find that we do give credit if they keep things on site. And we do require as part of, part of our current ordinance, a tree replacement sheet, which is a landscaping plan, where they have to give us before they develop the property, how they're going to replant everything and where it lays out. And but it's reviewed by both the planning department to verify the landscaping requirements as well as myself or my department to verify the tree replacement requirements are met. So we do see that landscaping plan is part of their development application right now, if it's a developer.
Okay, Counselor Lehman.
So if, if their landscaping plan, which is approved by the building department and staff and stuff, is acceptable of the end result, then where is, where's the problem lie? Why is there, what's the?
Why, do we need the tree replacement ordinance?
No, no. It, it, development comes in and they apply for a permit to build commercial industrial on a forty acre plot. They make a landscaping plan, show what the buildings are going to be in parking lots and replacement trees and buffers and so on and so forth. They have this document in front of them that, that's acceptable, then why is there such a hard red tape process to get through this for development? If we already know what the end result is going to be?
There isn't.
Well, that's not what I'm hearing. So when we, when we take a, a bond, surety bond from these developers, is it to make sure that the end product of trees is going to be there?
No, there is a landscaping, and then the, the escrows that are taken are just to make sure that that vegetation lasts for a year for the landscaping requirements, and just for the tree portion, we keep it for two years, that they live through two growing seasons so that they're established. That's all that we take it for.
But I think the bigger issue than to the mayor's point, if I'm understanding, would be hypothetical on this forty acre development. They took down sixty trees in the approved design landscape plan, they're putting back twenty. Now they owe the city four hundred times forty minus four that they're allowed to take down. So now there's a chunk of money that they have to pay toward that on top of the new stuff they're putting in that has to be guaranteed for a year, for half of it, and two years for the other half.
They don't pay for anything that they've taken down.
Only residential does that.
No, nobody pays for anything that they've taken down.
I take four trees down, I gotta give you four hundred bucks.
No, you don't. You have to replace one tree.
Or give you four hundred dollars. Obviously, if I took them down and I don't want them there, that's why I gotta pay.
If you don't plant the tree, then you have that, that option to pay that, that amount of money, which is same as a developer. They don't plant the trees and pay the money. They either plant the trees, and if they plant the trees, then they give us an escrow to keep those trees, when the landscaping per our landscaping ordinance, through the required growing season that, or growing cycles that we need, which is two years for trees. But if they give us money for four hundred, then they give us no money as escrow because there's no trees to keep over two years. So if they can't fit all the trees on their site and they choose the financial part, they don't give us a escrow to keep in hand for two years because there's nothing for us to monitor.
Mr. Thompson.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, maybe I can help just a little bit on this, I'm not sure if, but maybe the way to look at this is assume you have two exact, identical commercial developments coming in. One doesn't have a tree on it, the other one has got tons of trees. Both of those developments are going to have to comply with your landscaping requirements. That's requirement. Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong. The second development has all the trees, has additional requirements superimposed. They have to comply if this was adopted. Well, this, that pot actually is already in the city code. It's not being changed. So they had that development because of the nature of the lot, has to comply with a second requirement. Now, I think what I hear Jamie said is they get credit for the first one. If they have to put in fifty shrubs, bushes or trees, and they have, but they have to do sixty under the, they get a credit. You're not going to double count it. So I think the issue that the mayor's raising is, is do we want the tree management regulations to apply to commercial industrial, not the landscaping, where that already applies? Uh, and, and just to clarify one more thing, that, those provisions are in the code now. This amendment was really put together to address the clear cutting when there's no development going on. It's really to address the woodland alteration. So, I mean, it's a legitimate policy question raised. Do you want to keep in the commercial industrial? But I didn't want you to lose sight of the fact that commercial industrial has landscaping requirements, regardless of whether they have trees or not on the, on the property.
Try, sorry, I'm trying to find the section. The, where in the current one, Jamie, is how many need to be replaced on land for what's removed? Sorry, I can't find it.
Um, in the replacement tree requirement, section D, it talks about if it's ranked per our corridor design criteria of the ratios. And we have a mapping that was put together in two thousand and five with the EAC and a consultant that identified what those corridor rankings were. And really unless you live on a bluff or along a, a water feature in Shakopee, you're most likely in the good, the three to one replacement.
All right, so what does, where are we at with this from your opinion now, counsel? Counselor Clay.
I'm tired of hitting this ball over the net. So I want to offer resolution, or ordinance number eight sixty-sixth, fourth series.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Counselor Whiting, second. All right, discussion.
If you second it, you have to vote for it, right?
I would. My opinion right now is I would vote no, even though I am, would definitely believe we need to have tree management regulations. But I don't think it makes sense at this point for how commercial industrial is handled. And I would like to definitely see it come back, but include handling commercial industrial in a different manner. I don't have a problem at all with how residential is handled, especially residential developments, because it's much easier to handle to, as it's, to go around trees and to make your development work differently within residential areas. And I think it's a much more beneficial, even though it is beneficial to commercial areas, much more beneficial in residential areas to make sure to maintain those. So that's the direction I'm at right now. Uh, Counselor Whiting was first.
What I'm seeing is, as the city limits are concerned right now, we're talking about definitely four lots and a potential of eleven lots. Four being heavily wooded, seven having a few trees, and twenty-four, of course, goes on and on. But basically eleven lots, am I correct? Or eleven parcels?
Those are only parcels under two and a half acres that you had asked me to look for.
Oh, those are the under two and a half.
So those are parcels that could potentially be
Those are waived.
clear cut and doesn't have to, to take out the woodland alteration permit, which is something new. So that's where that asked, that doesn't look at larger parcels. That wasn't part of the direction, which we can do. This is just parcels under two and a half acres that you could, you could see those four heavily wooded, which are the ones down here on the river, in, down actually towards Rahar. There's four or three there and one over on Fourth Avenue that could potentially be clear cut with, and would fall outside of the current revisions to the ordinance that we're bringing forward because of that stipulation of two and a half acres or more.
We still have a lot of room for movement here. I mean, there's, they can still cut the trees, replace the amount of trees that are required or save them. And I still see the value in this and protects it from having the issues we've had with the clear cutting.
Counselor Sherman.
Um, I agree with the mayor on looking at options that make more sense for the commercial industrial. So I agree with that part. And I also agree with Counselor Lehman on the residential piece. And I would, I'd be interested to know if we could see something that was more of an incentive to residents to save trees versus a penalty, which is kind of what that four hundred dollars feels like, a penalty, versus an incentive for them to keep trees if they so desire. That's just some feedback on that.
Counselor Lehman.
Yeah, I'd have to say in the last twelve years, seventy-five percent of the residential development in Shakopee was built in a farmer's field where there was zero trees. And we've gained lots of trees because of that development pattern. We just happened to be lucky that we had empty fields all the way up to the bluff line. And so I would say seventy-five percent came into Shakopee, developed these properties. There was nothing on it but a, a blank piece of ground with no tree requirement. And in that process, we required them to put, you know, X amount of trees per lot or whatever, which I agree with when they develop it, you know, you should have a couple of trees on each household lot. It's kind of nice. So we've netted trees. Now, I'm not saying that there's not areas of Shakopee that have some very nice woodlands that we should think long-term about how to, how to keep them. You know, and I think about some of the bluff line out here, some of the South Bridge area and some of the river bottoms. And if I hear it correctly, if we rezone parts of north of First Avenue to industrial, they can clear cut this with no repercussions whatsoever, but I can't go home and cut my trees down. This is ridiculous. It doesn't make any sense.
You can if you're not pulling a permit. If you just want to remove your trees from your property, you could go cut them all down. If you pull that permit is when it triggers these requirements. If you're less than two and a half acres, that's what this new proposal is coming forward. So it doesn't restrict you as a homeowner of doing that.
Right.
Unfortunately, we're in times where it's really hard to know what the laws are.
Counselor Clay.
As you see, this is going to go down in flames with little sparks flying through the stubble. I just want to tell you that when the next little section of our rapidly diminuising, diminuising, you know, bits of urban forest, when the next little bit of it disappears in the middle of the night, I don't want to hear any complaining from any of you about it.
Oh, I disagree with you entirely. I, I want this to come back to make sure that those kinds of things don't happen. I just disagree with this, in its form currently.
Then pass it now and, and then modify it later.
Mr. Mayor, I think you need to understand the effect of this vote, okay? You currently have an ordinance that requires commercial industrial development to comply with your tree replacement. That's in your code. If this motion pa, if this motion doesn't pass, it, it just means this amendment doesn't get adopted, but the current regulations are still there. So you're going to have to take another swat at the tennis ball if you want to direct staff to relook at that. That, that's all I'm suggesting. The main reason for this amendment, ninety percent of this, was to add the definition of woodland alteration to address the, the clear cutting. Now, in conjunction with that, these other issues came up and Jamie had to address them. But I don't want you to have the understanding that whatever vote you take tonight is going to change the regulations with respect to commercial industrial. That is in your code and you'll need to give staff further direction on that.
I fully understand. Thank you.
Two points, Mayor. First, the clear cutting, as I understand the direction of the mayor's taken and which I agree with, would be if you're zoned commercial or industrial, you can clear cut that property providing you have on file with the city an end use plan, an acceptable end use plan. That's, that's kind of what I'd like to see, because then you know, that would stop somebody from doing it when they don't have a plan. However, the one that we did have out here on Fourth Avenue, they're, they clear cut it to till it all under and plant crops. We can't stop that. Even this ordinance isn't going to allow this. Stop that. State law lets them do that for agricultural purposes. So. Well.
I thought that was clarified.
They, they can, they can cut that down and grow corn. We can't stop them from doing that.
Jamie, could you please clarify that one?
Let me take a crack at that one. That's not what the statute says, okay? There's both statutes that are involved prevent, uh, not prevent, restrict governmental entities from taking certain actions that would affect existing agricultural operations. All right, so if someone is not farming their property and they want to cut down trees to farm the property, regulating that is not prevented by state law, because it's not an existing farm that you're trying to preserve. It'd be a new farm and then state law doesn't govern that. Under the current city code, the current code, if this amendment doesn't go through, you're right, they can do that. They can come in, clear cut it. We've seen that happen, and there's no prohibition. But it's not because of state law, it's because there's nothing in the city code that prevents that. And the question for you tonight, these, most of the question is, do you want to adopt an amendment to do that? And I think the issue you have, you're wrestling with is the commercial industrial. So the question is, do you want to adopt the amendments to this that prevents the clear cutting and then give direction to staff to address the commercial industrial? Or you just not want to adopt anything and still give that direction to staff? That, that's what I think the issue that you're wrestling with is.
Okay, I can get on board with adopting this and then addressing the commercial industrial. Is that acceptable? I mean, is that?
Are we going to address the residential issue too?
We can talk about it. So let's vote on this. If there's any further discussion on this amendment that we've got, this current ordinance that we've got right now, after the lengthy discussion this evening that I apologize for, again, for bringing on at the last minute. But I think it's important to talk about. So is there any further discussion on the amendment? And then we will, on the ordinance, and then we'll discuss what we want to move on from there and talk about that separately. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
All right, it passes three to two. Now, I would like to direct staff to relook at the commercial industrial personally, the commercial industrial portion of that, to reduce duplication and make the process much easier and work with economic development. um, and make the process much easier and work with Economic Development Advisory Committee and, uh, new coordinator on how we can make that process as smooth and easy as we can for commercial industrial.
We can certainly look at it. It may, they may be two mutually exclusive goals. However, I think there's gonna be a compromise in there. And it's gonna come back to you and you're gonna have to determine what your level of comfort is on that. We can certainly take a shot at it.
After lengthy discussion, yes. Council Layman?
And I'd, I'd like to see so somehow, and I don't know how to word it, but to get it to accomplish that, it's, you can't clear cut commercial industrial property without an exempt, exemption from, not exemption, but a exclusion or whatever from the city. And the only way to get that is to have a, an end-use plan and shows what you're gonna use it for. Well, in any modifications for commercial industrial, you want to streamline the process and make it easier to develop and get tax base. But at the same token, you want to make sure that what you get in the end is acceptable.
I agree.
And I want the residential piece looked at because now we're telling everybody, it's Arbor Day, buy a couple of trees and plant them. However, if you cut them down, you might get fined.
You don't get fined. You can plant another tree.
Right.
Okay, any further discussion on this item? Alright, Jamie, do you need anything else from us on this item?
No, I don't believe so.
You sure? Mr. McNeil?
We'll, we'll bring it back.
Okay. Uh, item number two, eleven E two, award of contract for the construction of Riverside Fields Park, uh, resolution number seventy-two ninety.
Alright, let me switch gears. Alright. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, I'm bringing you back this, uh, item actually for, this is the third year in a row you've seen this. Um, so I'll get out the, back in two thousand and, um, eleven, the city council approved the concept plan here for the Riverside Fields Park, in which it is now officially named Riverside Field, now called Riverside, Riverside Bluffs Park as it was back then. Um, and it's just, I'm sorry, it's just the east side of the development because this other side is not a part of City Park right now. So it's, um, the drainage trail, drainage ditch goes here. So what the park concept plan that the council approved to move forward with, um, to read, to do plans and specifications and go for bidding back in two thousand and eleven was uh, two tennis courts, a hockey rink, the shelter, half a parking lot here, sand volleyball court and a playground area. Back in two thousand and eleven, we did do the playground installation, so that is already completed. We re, we did bid this out in two thousand and twelve. However, um, we had two bidders come in. We bid it late in the season. We had two bids come in that were extremely over budget, so council chose at that time to reject the bids, go back and do some earthwork, um, calculations to get more, uh, clearer numbers on what we were working with as far as the soil is out at the site, um, and then rebid it. So I'm back for you tonight. Uh, you did give permission to city staff to rebid this earlier, a few months ago. Uh, we did rebid the park and we opened the bids on Wednesday, April ninth, so last Wednesday, at eleven AM. We received six total bids, uh, for the development of this park. The low bidder at this time, which is included in your packets, the bid results is in there, um, is Northwest Asphalt of Shockpy. Um, their total base bid was six hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred, or two hundred and eighteen dollars and eighty-six cents. Now, when you look at our budget that we had for this park, uh, which is included in your memo as well, and I could zoom in for this. Our total budget in our park reserve CIP, uh, was seven hundred and seventy dollars. That includes the one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars budgeted for the warming house that our parks, our parks maintenance department is going to build as they've built the one in Westminster Park and Green Meadows. Thirty thousand dollars is design and construction documents, which most of that twenty-four thousand was already spent when we did this the first time in two thousand and twelve. Then we have fifteen thousand for construction administration, which amends the CIP, uh, to five hundred and ninety thousand. Our contingency, we're doing six percent of that contingency, um, which is spuck fees, um, soil testing, staking, that sort of thing falls within there. Um, so it gives us a construction budget of five hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred dollars. So as you could see, the, um, and the engineer's estimate was six hundred and sixty-four thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and eighty-six cents. So the total base bid from, um, from Northwest Asphalt was under our engineers' construction estimate, but it's a hundred and nine thousand over our budget. And we had a feeling because we know of the soils that ended up to be extremely bad in this park, that have to be corrected and soil work that has to be done. We had a feeling that we would be over budget, so we did put in alternatives, um, to the bidding process that, um, help, that we can do to help bring that, uh, budget within our allocated budget of the five hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred dollars. When we bid this, we put in, the first alternative was to eliminate the hockey rink paving. Um, and this is something that, um, is fine with our city staff as far as the maintenance of a hockey rink. We've had the last two hockey rinks paved and it's been very hard to make ice on. Um, the downfall is, is that it's usually only used then during the winter season. Um, the other paved hockey rinks that we have throughout the city have the basketball court in or aligned for roller hockey and are, are used all year round. But if we do eliminate that paved hockey rink, the major request from, one of the major requests from the residents is to have some sort of basketball court within this park. Um, so if we did that, then we could eliminate the hockey paving and replace the sand volleyball court with a half-court basketball. Um, so that is in that, um, southern section. And then I will touch on this volleyball court in just a second too, because we do have, uh, have some comments about that as well, but. So our plan set, um, that we have for the bidding shows the development of the park, um, like this. So this would unpave the hockey rink, take this basketball court out. It would move the half-court basketball court down here next to our playground. And would eliminate that, that location for that sand volleyball court. So I'll touch on that at the end because it's not part of these alternatives. Um, and then the third alternative was put in there as a request from the city council back when we were doing the, the documentation is if we were way over budget, there is an opportunity to take out these tennis courts, change them into a full-court basketball court, and we would still not pave the hockey rink. That was looked at because of the fact of the proposal from the, the Shockpy Tennis Association for the potential for an eight-court indoor tennis facility. However, I, I want to make clear to the council, when we did this park planning process, if you were through the process, we had very, very heavy, uh, community involvement in both the development of this park and in Green Meadows. And these two tennis courts came highly sought after by the residents of this area because there isn't any tennis courts east of the high school, really, um, in Shockpy. So. And we justified adding these two tennis courts because we are going to be removing two tennis courts at Lions Park in two thousand and fourteen to make those addition, the remaining two courts ADA accessible. Um, so we wouldn't be adding any tennis courts if we added these. And then, um, so those are the alternatives specific to this project. So we are recommending at this time, the, um, alternative one and two, keeping the tennis courts in because of the fact that the indoor tennis facility is such an unknown at, at this time. Then the fourth alternative that we added is actually, um, part of our two thousand and thirteen park reserve CIP, and that was to complete the parking lot at the Green Meadows Park. Um, as you might recall, when we developed that park, we were over budget. Um, the bids came in over budget there as well, so we had alternatives that we needed to do to keep under budget. We knew that our playing fields there, which was a, it's a large soccer, lacrosse field, football field, um, and then a baseball field would not be ready to be used um, until two thousand and thirteen, which will be used this summer. Uh, so for one year, we regrouped and we only built half of that parking lot so that people could use the remainder of that park. We did budget for the remainder of the parking lot in two thousand and thirteen park reserve CIP. And we wanted to include it as part of this project, so it's still is funded, is budgeted separately. It's all funded out of the park reserve, but budgeted separately. Um, but we thought we could get better bids if we did the projects together because the addition of the parking lot is, um, only a thirty, it's only thirty stalls. So it's not a really large project that we'd want to bid separately. So, um, we are recommending that we do that as part of the project, um, to do bid alternate four. So staff is recommending alternate one, two and four. We have, um, gotten some questions about the volleyball court. People do want the volleyball court in that project. If we do alternates one, two and four, it does bring our budget, um, down or our, our total bid price from Northwest Asphalt, there's still the lower bid. It brings them down, sorry, you can't see that very well, uh, to five hundred and ten thousand, seventy, seventy-one dollars and sixteen cents, which is approximately forty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars under budget of what we have allocated with the five fifty-four. So we do have enough funds, um, we will be under budget by enough funds that we could at a later date, do a change order to put a volleyball court in or have our own city staff put the volleyball court in. I did check with our architect today, um, Stan Tech, and the area or the, this park is graded so that we have room in the future to put the sand volleyball court back in this area, either going east-west or here in this area, where we wouldn't have to do a lot of grading for it. So it would be a minimal, um, between five and ten thousand dollars to add that volleyball court back in, which we have the funds to do. But at this time, it's not part of the bid package. Um, we can't make that change right now because that could possibly change other uh, prices that people didn't, you know, as they bid it, they didn't do that. So if we did do that, we'd either do it as a change order with this contractor or our own city staff could construct it, um, for us. So with that, I'll take any questions or we're asking council to approve, um, the resolution seventy-two ninety, accepting the bids for construction of Riverside Fields Park to Northwest Asphalt with alternatives one, two and four.
Council Layman?
I'll offer resolution seventy-two ninety, resolution City Shockpy, accepting bids for construction of Riverside Fields Park to Northwest Asphalt Inc., including alternate one, two and four.
Have a second? Council Sherman, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. After non-lengthy discussion, exactly. Uh, thank you, Ms. Polly. Item eleven F one, massage license applications. Chief Tate?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. City code requires all massage therapists and massage therapy businesses to be licensed. Uh, you may recall, this last fall, we spent a great deal of time in researching and gathering input from various stakeholders and developing this ordinance. We did this to make sure that our minimum requirements were more than fair and reasonable. With that in mind, the police department has conducted thorough backgrounds on the two individuals listed in your packet. The summary of the findings are attached. We have prepared two resolutions, uh, separate resolutions, which outline the specific reasons for denial. Those resolutions, uh, are resolution number seven-two-nine-one, denying a massage therapist license to Yang Pin Wang. And resolution seven-two-nine-two, resolution denying a business and massage therapist license to Wei Pan, doing business as excellent Asian massage. These individuals have been contacted both in person and through certified letter, notified exactly why we are recommending that, uh, their licenses be denied and the process for appeal. I'm informed Wei Pan is here tonight and I'd be happy to get into any specifics, um, regarding her case. Probably after, I'm assuming you hear her appeal.
Thank you. Yes, would you like to approach?
I'm sorry, it's my English is a little bad. I don't know if you, why it's been a license for me, I don't know.
And what was your name again? I'm sorry.
It's, uh, my name is Wei Pan.
Okay.
Yeah. Sorry, it's my English a little bit. I call it the city, it's, I change license, it's, city today is talking me, no, it's change license, I don't know. Sorry.
It's alright. Um, so you don't believe the allegations against are accurate or? Do you understand? Do you understand, I guess? I don't know how. Chief Tate?
Sorry.
I don't know how to help, um.
Again, our staff has been in contact with Wei Pan, uh, throughout the background investigation. As outlined in, in the ordinance and I have, have reviewed her background packet and subsequent police reports, uh, relating to this. Criminal investigation by the Hopkins Police Department in May of two thousand and twelve revealed that illicit sexual activities were occurring at, uh, an establishment that was owned by Wei Pan. Uh, this investigation led to criminal charges for prostitution. Uh, as a result of that investigation, the city of Hopkins, uh, not only revoked her massage therapist license, but her business license as well. Uh, there were several, um, inconsistencies in her background application. Differences between her application and what was, uh, what she put down in her Hopkins application. Omissions and questionable professional credentials. She has two different, um, titles from the same university, signed by the same person on the same day, so. We're very confident in our recommendation, recommendation on a number of levels under our city code that, um, this license should be denied. There are several, um, Ms. Pan has advertised on back page and some other websites I will refrain from, from naming. And it's, uh, very open as to what's going on.
Ms. Pan, do you have anything to say?
I'm sorry, it's before, it's Hopkins, it's the, it's, it's, I know here, I, I wonder if it's Chinese, China. I know here, my, this is my friend, I don't know. This is, this is no me.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a license, no, no me. I don't know.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Did everybody understand? Council Layman?
Chief, it's my understanding by reading this, uh, that there, there's not meeting the experience and educational requirements either, according to our city code?
That is, that is a, um, you might be reading a different individual. There's two separate resolutions.
Okay.
Her professional credentials are, are in question here. We're questioning the validity of them.
Okay.
Al- along with other, um, things under the code that we feel, just the fact that she is revoked from Hopkins is enough under our city code to deny.
And the other one doesn't meet the experience requirement?
Correct.
Okay. Very good.
Ms. Thompson?
Um, Mr. Mayor, uh, I think it would be helpful if you could inquire of her whether she just disagrees with, um, the findings or she doesn't understand what they are because of her English impediment. I, I think we should get that from her so we, I, so I understand what the issue is there.
Ms. Pan, did you understand that question? Do you have, um, do you understand what the, uh, the issues are here? You simply don't agree with them and we need to figure things out or what? Do you understand what we're asking?
Sorry, it's a.
Okay. Could we table this and get translator to help out, Ms. Thompson?
Well, Mr. Mayor, um, the first one, she's not here, so we can adopt the first resolution. She didn't appear. I, I think we, uh, it's not clear to me whether she just doesn't understand what, English enough to understand what's going on here. If that's the case, we should get an interpreter for her. And that, I, I don't know whether that is or isn't the case, but what she's saying isn't helping. So I think we should make arrangements for that before you take action on that. And the reason for that is this. Although this is a new application, it is, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, it is operating in the city now, correct? Is that correct, Chief?
That's correct.
Yeah. And so the effect of this is gonna be, is gonna mean we're gonna deny her a business and because it's due process, that she was implicated in that. I, I think we're better off making arrangements with an interpreter so sh- we can be sure that she understands the nature of why we're denying the license. Not whether she agrees with it or disagrees, just that she understands the nature of it.
Okay, Council Layman?
Chief, has the, uh, language line been utilized by your investigative team in the process of gathering this information to the applicant?
During our background, we did not need that when our background investigator was talking with, with her.
Okay. Alright.
We communicated that many of the same reasons that we're denying is, are the exact same reasons that Hopkins listed.
Alright, so the applicant that is not here is resolution seventy-two ninety-one, is that correct? Just make sure I'm clear. Counsel Whiting?
I'll offer Resolution seventy-two ninety-one, a resolution of the city of Shakopee denying a massage therapist license to Yan Ping Wang, and move its adoption.
Counsel Lehman? Do we have any discussion? Counsel Lehman?
Yeah, I just know, I would note that it's being denied based on the findings in the resolution, if they're in here.
Yep, they're in here, number four, okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
Ms. Man, before we adopt the next one, can I ask a question of the applicant?
Please.
Ms. Pen? Did you, did you get the letter from the police department telling you to come here tonight?
I don't know, sorry.
How did you know how to come here tonight?
Me?
Yes.
Seven o'clock.
I think we better go ahead and...
Okay.
And I understand she may be, the police may not have had any difficulty talking to her, but right now...
Between a rock and a hard spot. Counsel Whiting?
I'll offer to table Resolution seventy-two ninety-two until proper interpreters and communication can be made with Wei Pan.
Okay, Counsel Lehman?
Second it, I'm bringing it back after that.
Alright.
She seemed to fully understand what happened in Hopkins, so I pretty much feel she understands what's happening here. So I'm at about noon.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one. So we've tabled that until the next meeting to have an interpreter. Thank you, Chief Tate. Alright, item number twelve, council member reports, we'll start on this side, Counsel Sherman?
I have no report this evening.
Counsel Lehman?
No report.
Counsel Clay?
You always start on that side.
I do not.
Too, too. I have a report. But why don't we let you go first?
Counsel Whiting?
You got a long report?
I gotta organize it.
Okay. Friday, April fifth, I attended the executive committee meeting for scale, considering upcoming topics. And then again, on April, Friday, April twelfth, we had the meeting and recapped the New Prague Schools incident, along with a discussion on garbage and recycling, which was a very interesting, do wanna mention, and there was a letter in our information packet of how some of our Shakopee police worked with the New Prague Police Department. I think it's a great indication of how the working group of scale can communicate back and forth and have the, the knowledge of the different departments and different entities to work together as a unit, and it, thank God it was a hoax for this situation, but it worked well, and if Chief Tate was here, I'd congratulate those officers that stood out, so. Monday, April eighth, the school board met. They're looking at ways to honor their volunteers for Volunteer Appreciation Week, April twenty-first through the twenty-seventh. They confirmed the school districts moved to the South Suburban Conference, and they're no longer with the Masota Conference. They all compete against teams like Farmington, who also moved to the conference, Apple Valley, Bloomington, Burnsville, Eagan, Eastview, and both Lakevilles, Prior Lake and Rosemount. They're continuing work on their strategic planning, along with, and they're also working on property acquisitions. The board is looking at possible land sales, particularly near Jackson Elementary School, where they feel they have a couple of residential lots, along with some other potential commercial business type properties, along with their acquisitions. The board is continuing work on a referendum planning, this coupled with a cooperative annexation and working on planning for the future growth in terms of roads and future land development. Some of their next steps include scheduling a joint meeting, and I'm led to believe that's with the mayor and city staff, with local realtors, to get a grasp on the current real estate market. And the chamber and visitor board meeting will be tomorrow.
Thanks, sir, Counselor Clay.
Thank you. Utilities Commission yesterday on April fifteenth, tax day, passed Resolution ten forty. It's not a joke. The resolution approving the plans and specifications...
Was it easy?
Yes, it was, ten forty, easy. For the water main replacement projects for our street reconstruction this summer, so we're good to go for, out for bids. They also passed a number of resolutions for pipe and water main oversizing in conjunction with the Marshall Road project that we are kind of working in conjunction with the county on, that we're all familiar with, so that's all going well. The last thing I've been asked to talk about is the the Patch, Shakopee Patch website, had a article on April eighth titled "Is Shakopee Helping to Deplete the Metro's Water Reserves", and they talked about, or accused Shakopee of overpumping its allotted water, that's allotted from the Met Council, and basically was just way off base and inaccurate. The, for one thing, the Met Council doesn't monitor that, it's the Department of Natural Resources with, which does that. And after double checking with all the people who do monitor that, they found that Shakopee is not in violation, and never has in the past been in violation of our appropriation permit for water. The article that, they found the article was an error, and that the data they were using was projected to data, not real data. Spuck's staff contacted the Patch and asked them to correct the article. They decided not to do that and merely took it off their, their website, which I think is rather unprofessional on, on their part. So I want to reassure all the Shakopee citizens that we are not overpumping our allotted water, and that our, our water system is, is not in any serious condition, or not in any problem at all. A few weeks back, there was a article at the Tribune that, using these same kind of projected numbers, that said we were drawing down on our wells and they were running out of water, when in fact our static water levels that they check in the wells every year has remained the same for the last ten or fifteen years. There, there is no issue, except people get a hold of these numbers that they don't understand from the, you know, other organizations, and then come up with some exaggerated headline to try to, I don't know, what does the Patch sell, advertising? I mean, who would wanna go to that when they can go to the Shakopee newspaper?
Shakopee Valley.
Shakopee Valley News.
Counsel Lehman?
Mr. Clay, I can correct me, but I bet our wells today are pumping more than they did five years ago, but we also about five years ago got additional approval for additional wells that have yet to be put in. So eventually, the new wells that already have approval will be put in. These will, will be utilized less, and these new ones will draw some, to even it out. So that wasn't included either.
No.
Counsel Whiting?
Mr. Mayor, if I could also touch on one other over-exaggerated headline about Shakopee City Council holding the fate of Raceway Park in their hands.
Which paper was that now?
I, well, I'm not gonna mention any papers' names, but it wasn't Shannon's. So I wanna assure the general public that Shakopee Raceway held their own fate, the fans of Raceway held the fate of that park, and we are just trying to move the process forward with where they're going with their future, so, wanted to state that.
Thank you. Anything else, Counsel Clay?
Nope.
I have a couple of items. On, let's see, April fourth, we met with the Burnsville Egan Savage School District about the Emerson tax abatement, and that was approved by a four to two vote at the Burnsville Egan Savage School District, so that went forward. As well, on the same note, the House unveiled their omnibus tax bill today, and the Emerson project was in, the sales tax exemption was in there. Last week, the Senate brought forward their omnibus tax bill, and that project was not in the tax reform omnibus bill, but we anticipate that it will be either added to the Senate tax omnibus bill, the overall omnibus bill, or added in conference between the House and the Senate, because we have very strong support from the Senate, the House, and also the governor's office, so.
Strong support in the Senate, how come it didn't remain in the Senate?
They ran out of time, basically.
They're always on vacation, how can it run out of time?
Yeah, I'll let you take that one up, but they give us assurances that it will end up in the final product, so we'll see what happens, who knows? So that is there, and everybody's working hard, thanks to Representative Beard, Senator Pratt for their help, also Senator Dahl, and also Claire Robling. Former Senator Claire Robling has been extremely helpful in that process, working with the county as well. Then I testified for that in front of the Senate on the ninth, and then attended scale on the twelfth, and then on the thirteenth Saturday, went to the River Valley Theater Company, had their red carpet cabaret, which was great, supporting theater and arts in Shakopee, so that was a lot of fun to be there, and then last night, Mr. McNeil held a stellar Boards and Commissions introduction meeting, it was beyond compare.
You can call it stellar?
It was very good, and it got everybody on the same page as to where we're at. So that's all I've got, other business, Mr. Looney?
Mayor, members of the council, on this Thursday, April eighteenth, there is an open house from four to six, it's in the police station training room on the one oh one sixty-one project, the bridge and the new, I guess, roundabout. It would be a lot of interest, I think, to a lot of folks on this side of the river. They'll have some good exhibits there, and mainly we'll be showing what the construction staging will be like, because although the roadway will be open, there will be some changes throughout the project as far as where you can go, in order to construct improvement. So it, state's putting it on, and it'll be at four to six on April eighteenth.
Perfect. Anything else, other business? Counsel Lehman?
Motion to adjourn.
To when? Tuesday, May seventh, twenty thirteen, any second? Second, Counsel Clay, there we go, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, we are adjourned at nine-twenty, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you very much, everyone.